It began. And once again, I mean, this is very similar to what we've already discussed. A 12-week program. There is a weekly stipend that is given to participants and this is to allow them to take care of childcare, other smaller items that may come up while they're attending the training. And then the cost for the instruction per participant was running around $8,500. This was at the beginning and so we know that costs have changed and fluctuated since they did this several years ago. So this is just an estimate of what that may cost. And these are some of the outcomes that have happened as a result of the program in Franklin County.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I think that's important, the outcomes.
Oh, yes.
And the funding source.
Yep.
So, go ahead.
Because of the wraparound services, 85% of participants graduate, 88% secure employment. The starting wages have ranged from $15 to $26 per hour with full benefits. And I think they've actually gone up a little more when they've added in the driving futures. That one has, is, I think some folks have come out with being able to make close to $80,000 a year with the CDL. And 60 building future graduates are in the workforce with an average starting wage of $1791 and benefits. There's been 30 cohorts in Franklin County, nine building futures, 21 driving futures, and 248 graduates since program inception. 65% have pursued careers in the trades and 50% of the graduates were TANF eligible when they enrolled. Average wage, $23.68 an hour with some as high as $45 an hour plus benefits. And they just started an all-women's building futures and driving futures cohort since these trades have been dominated by men and so they were very intentional in trying to attract more women to the programming and that's why they started the first all-women cohort recently. Awesome. And this is just one of the success stories of an individual who came to the program without, unhoused. And he was accepted into the first class and he began as an apprenticeship in the laborers union. And he's been able to get an apartment and has moved on to self-sufficiency. All right.
Thank you for the presentation and I'm somewhat familiar with the Columbus one because I did some work with ACT Ohio. And that was one of my jobs to find out about these programs and this is kind of the model statewide. So this is great. I do want to commend the Urban League who has had a track record of success with getting people connected to employment, getting small business owners connected, just really being out there, obviously, with what we dealt with with COVID, connecting African-Americans to the vaccine. But I want to say that the Urban League has had a track record for a very, very long time. There was another program that you had similar to this, but I think this is a lot more robust. When I was at the state and, you know, I think you had almost a 90% placement of people who were in the construction field. And this allows you to even be broader and connect people with the unions. But I was very happy to support that at that time and Kristi and I, we were both at the state at that time. And to have those kind of numbers of now almost 90% placement is just unbelievable. So very interested in this program. I will open it up to Vice President Dre House.
Thank you and thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. I too am very excited about this program. I think that we have been trying very hard in this community to get people, especially people of color involved in some of the projects that the county is doing, whether it's construction or employment or whatever it is. And so I think that this is a very strategic way to try to accomplish that goal. And I am familiar with some of the successes in Franklin County. I have a couple of questions for you. So if, I note that it's $8,500 per pupil and so I did the math. And so you said 20 in the first cohort, so it's around 170,000 then for that first cohort of 20 to go through the program. My question for you is, and I don't know how much money is available because this is ARPA money that is kind of fell to the bottom of a program that we've already put out. And so there's some money available there. But my question is if we had more resources available, say over 200,000, say 250 or whatever the number would be, would you be able to ramp up to a higher number than 20 if we had the resources to do it? Or are you pretty much at the 20-person limit to get started and then we could build from there?
So that slide was one of the appendix slides, which was the Franklin County initial cohort. That's not the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio. So the great thing is we've learned from their mistakes. And so what we've learned from their conversations is what worked well and what didn't work well. But we wanted to at least give you a sense as to how they started out. So I wouldn't say for sure that that would be the final cost for a cohort that we would do because there are additional things that we would probably need to provide to have a better success with our initial cohort. So that was most likely reflected in our budget that we sent. But to answer your question, the amount of participants really depends on the amount of apprenticeships that are available with the union partners. So what has made the success rate so high is that we, they, in Franklin County, they never accepted more individuals into the program than the union said they had positions available. So what we didn't want to do is tell people we have this great, you know, program to get them hired and get them trained and then they go sit on the bench waiting to get called to a job for months and months and months. And so the way that it's designed and timed is so that we only accept, you know, say IBEW says, you know, we only have, well, let's say, yeah, we only have, you know, five openings. Then if we would only accept five individuals who would be interested in electrician. Same thing with, you know, plumbers and pipe fitters. If they only had room for 10, we would only accept 10. So the numbers even for that first cohort are going to be driven by the positions available with our pre-apprenticeship partners who are doing the training and the jobs that would be available at the end. So to answer your question, yes, more funding would produce more individuals, but we also have to make sure that that lines up with the number of jobs that are available. From our conversations with labor so far, I believe that there's a lot of openings available. So I do believe that we would have an opportunity to do more than 20, but I would want to confirm that with the partners first. Because they are, they've been at every, labor has been at every single meeting. They were part of our field trip to Franklin County. They've been extremely engaged. And so they are really excited about doing this and so they definitely will want to be a part of the conversation to figure out the right number.
Okay. And then also as I look through the slide relative to the timing, the amount of time it takes to have somebody coached up on both the soft skills and the hard skills, is the total amount of weeks, 12 weeks, to complete the program?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that was what the Franklin County model was, the 12 weeks. I will want to get with our trades down here to, because some trades, apprenticeship program could be shorter or longer, right? So different trades may have a different amount of time. I am confident in how long it takes the Urban League to do the soft skills. And so, you know, we definitely can do our part within that timeframe.
Okay. All right. I've got other questions, but I'm going to allow others to ask questions.
I'm fine with her.
Do you have a follow-up? She said she's fine.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I was looking at your cover sheet on the application and amount of funding requested, $225. But I was also trying to determine what the total cost of the project, you say is $423,000. So can you tell me what that difference is?
Sure. If you, I believe we have the full budget. Okay. Yes, okay. So the full budget included the stipends, which was the $250 per person. And that was about $60,000. The supportive services, so some folks need transportation, childcare, and et cetera in order for them to participate in the programming. And so those wraparound supportive services were $17,000 of it. The eligibility verification was $7,000 and so that's doing the background checks because certain trades, certain offenses on your record will, you won't be able to pursue that particular trade. So we have to make sure that we do the background checks and the other things for eligibility. The instructors was $12,000 of those dollars. The trade-specific materials on the low end was $6,000. Tools, so each pre-apprentice has to have their tools of the trade. So depending on the trade, that ranges, but we averaged that out at about $9,000. And then the assessment and training materials were $12,000 of that.
Okay, so the cohort client expenses of $84,000, is that what is inclusive of what you just laid out? Itemized stipend, transportation, is that the $84,000?
That's beyond $84,000, those line items.
How much is, because I'm wondering the $200,000 difference on the total project.
Yeah, I can give you the full breakdown. I just have the two, what made up the initial $225 was the supplies, the personnel, which was the 113, the supplies, which was the $27,000, and this is all in, it should be in front of, do you have the full? Oh, okay. And then the?
That encompasses the $225.
Okay.
I'm just trying to find out the total cost of the project of $423. What, what in addition is that other than the $225? So you can tell me, maybe get me that later.
Okay. Let me look through it and make sure that you, I'm understanding what.
I'm looking at this sheet here.
Okay. No, I understand what sheet you're looking at, but yeah. I'll take a look and make sure that I clarify for you when I have a chance.
Very good. My other question you answered as far as the process of integration of the students that are involved with the union is so good to hear that the unions are so involved. Hamilton County is, they love apprenticeship, the majority of them. So the fact that they're involved is really important. And the incentives you answered is $250 for the whole 12-week program. How does that work? Do they get so much a week or?
Model after Franklin County, the stipend was a $250 per week.
$250 per week?
$250 per week.
Well, they didn't say, yeah, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. Okay.
Okay. She said $250 per week. You can, yeah. You have to talk into the mic so they can, our sign language. Anything else, Commissioner Dumas? Okay. I did have a couple of questions or, on the funding side from a long-term perspective. And this is not necessarily for you all, but for us to consider, I want to make sure we have the program and then we run out of ARPA money. I don't want the program to go away. And a lot of times it takes a ramp up and, you know, I don't want to get really into it as ready to go and then we don't have any dollars. So I wanted to ask the administrator, there were some TANF dollars in there. Are we looking at that for the future or, once this moves forward, then we would begin looking at some other things?
Yeah, so this, so the application, this application came in, it actually was not an application that was specifically eligible for the grant that it came in for because it was a pilot program. But the committee that reviewed it recognized that this was something that was just really innovative in its scope. And so we've got to pull this one aside and look at it a bit separately. So we started the review from it from that perspective. So as you said, Commissioner, we do have the funding for this now. We probably have some additional ARPA funding that we could even make available if we wanted to talk about extending this out a little bit further. Over the course of ARPA, long-term, yes, I think, you know, as we're talking, you know, outside the window of ARPA, we would want to look at, we owe dollars, TANF dollars through JFS, et cetera. We would certainly look at that and we would also look at other, some of our other economic development funds as well and test them for eligibility. We have not done that formally yet, but presuming that the board wanted to go down this route and work with this particular program, we would start that to look at sustainability.
Yeah, I think it's important if, you know, we're moving down this pathway and I'll speak for myself, I'm supportive of it. I think we need to start looking at sustainability. I think it should at least go the distance of ARPA and then look at, you know, what else is out there and maybe present back to us some ways, if it's okay with the board. I would like the administrator, the administration to get back to us on just some ways. Because I think when you start up a program, it takes some time for startup and then once it gets really going and then we're like, we don't have funding to keep it going. And so I would like to see us have some kind of plan before us that we all can take a look at and start to build that in and work with our workforce. They got a new name, Southwest, Sorwood, but I think they got another name now. I think they re- I think they remixed, they got a remix. But we know it as Sorwidd, but, yeah. I know, I said, no, the remix. But I think putting that forward so we can have some forward thinking and planning, I think, is critical. I do have another question. So where are we on this? Is this a resolution that has already passed? Are we getting ready to pass or what's the next steps?
So as I mentioned, recognizing that we thought it was something that the board would likely want to entertain, we've started reviewing that from a contractual perspective. We actually have it at the prosecutor's office being reviewed in advance. So no, this has not come forward yet, but presuming board direction, we would bring it forward as quickly as possible once it, once it's reviewed by the prosecutor, obviously reviewed by the Urban League as well. But we shouldn't be talking much time to get it before you, assuming we want to proceed.
Okay. As my colleagues, I'm comfortable having something come before us to move forward with it. I don't know if my colleagues are comfortable, Vice President Drehouse?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the chart, the Franklin County funding chart. And it, it seems to me that our chart would be like the flip of this. So our ARPA dollars would be the first dollars in. And then we might transition to their, what they've got, which is the TANF and the GRF dollars, then doing, or supporting the program in the out years. So as I refer to that, I'm just pointing that out as maybe a model in the reverse, really, for Hamilton County. And yes, I am supportive of this. I think it's a good idea. I think it hits the mark as to what this county is trying to do by way of workforce and inclusion. And so I'm happy to support this when it comes forward. I did have one other question. You talked about some of the partnership organizations or communities that you are going to reach out to, to make up the cohort. And so I heard you say, obviously, the Urban League, you have your own set of contacts that you'll rely on. The reentry population and the homeless population, you said. I'm wondering if you have any interaction with new Americans, with folks that have come to our community from other countries who might also fit the demographic here that we're looking for and be in a position to want to participate in this kind of training? Do you have any relationships there with new Americans?
So our programs are open to anyone in the community, anyone that's underserved. And so, you know, we don't, we don't close our doors on anyone that's seeking help. And we have had individuals come to our programming from other countries who are new to the United States or new to the area, but from, you know, migrated from other areas within the United States. Do we have a program that's focused squarely on that population? No, we do not. But anyone would be eligible for any of our programming. Whether we could reach out, I mean, we could partner with organizations that do have, you know, more stronger ties to that population if we, we needed to. But we believe that there's such a need in the communities that we do have the close ties to that we won't hurt for individuals who, who need this programming with our current, with our current participants in our current demographics.
Okay, yeah, and that's part of the reason I was asking about capacity too. I just, I do wonder, 20 is substantial, but I do wonder if you all had the capacity to do more and we could find the funding to do more, I wonder if we could accomplish that. But, but I hear what you're saying. So you, you feel like within your own ranks, you're probably going to get to that 20 number pretty quickly?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Commissioner Dumas, to answer your question, I was feverishly, you know, trying to track this because we, we didn't print out the whole thing trying to save trees. But the difference is only in the number of cohorts. And so with the full number would allow us to do a full year of cohorts or closer to a full year of cohorts where this one would just be one cohort. And as you saw, that's only 12 weeks. And so it would just be the initial funding because the application was capped at $225,000. So we had to tailor the program for what we would be able to accomplish for the $225,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That helps, yeah. Thank you. My last thing I would just say, and this is just ramping up, but eventually I'd like to see it connected to the administrator, possibly connected some kind of language we connect when we're doing some projects so that the people who are in this program, coming out of the program or while they're in the program can be on site of some of the projects we have. So they have that experience. And that can be a part of our, when we do our contracts or MOUs or contracts that we do with different construction companies or what have you, that some of the people will be from, you know, this program. I don't have all the language, but I've seen that before. And that way that really connects and makes the whole full circle. They get that experience, they get on their resume. We get projects that have the inclusion and diversity, if you will. And I just think that would be great. So I would just ask if you would look into that as well, how we can, you know, have a MOU with the Urban League's program with the projects that we're doing around the county. So just wanted to just add that to it. I think with, yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Dumas?
Well, I just had a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm wondering, Jeff, if you can give us a list of the labor unions that have apprenticeship programs? Because some labor unions do not like apprenticeship. So if we can make sure we modify, get that list, and when we have our projects, we'll know where to direct them. Because there are some that don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you. And what's the kickoff? Do you all have a timeline or are you waiting on us?
Yeah, we have to have the funding in order to have the timeline.
You know, a woman of deadlines, they get tired of me saying it, we gotta have a deadline.
But yes, once we have the funding secured and we're talking to other, you know, funding partners as well to try to see if we can, you know, bring other folks into the conversation as well, then, you know, we have to start putting things into place. So we can't do any of that without knowing that we have secured solid funding.
Well, it seems like we have a majority of the board hopefully unanimous to ask Jeff to, we'd like to have that come back and take action, we're ready. So we'll get back from you, you said the prosecutor's office?
Yeah, it is at the prosecutor's office currently. So once it's done, certainly we'll have to have the Urban League review it, get their comments on it. But once everyone has agreed upon the form of the contract, we'll get it back before the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I'm going to email, I just emailed the full budget to the president's staff member and that can print it out and it'll explain to you what the full $400,000 is.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both very much. There's no further business to come before us, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.